This is the Budget Committee meeting.
Yes.
I'm sorry. This is the Budget Committee meeting at 5:30, 2:00 PM, Monday, July 20th, 2020. Mr. Guarino is here. Ms. Johnson?
Mrs. Johnson is here, thank you.
Okay. Ms. Zim?
Here.
Ms. Bishop? Okay, we have you, Ms. Zim. Bishop is not here yet. Ms. Gilio?
Here.
We have Ms. Brown?
Here.
Ms. Raymond?
Here.
Ms. Odin?
I'm sorry, here.
Okay. Ms. Timmons is not here yet. Also with us tonight, we have Dr. Mosley. And we have, okay, Mr. Donovan?
Here.
And we have Ms. Bernato?
Here.
And we also have Mr. Norris?
Here.
Okay. So we don't, we have a couple of things on our agenda for tonight, and so I'm going to turn the floor over to Dr. Mosley if he wants to say a few words. If not, then he can turn it over to Mr. Donovan.
Thank you, everyone. I think that there was, the Board President, and I think it was a good decision to have an update on just the kind of the budget process. We did have some, I use the word excess funds, but some money that was allocated to our schools, to the city, and subsequently used for, or we could use for a variety of opportunities. So I think it's important that the public know some of the, how much is being talked about, number one, but also, number two, some of the recommendations that the leadership team came up with in terms of spending down the $2.2 million that the state has given to the city for our schools. So with that said, I'll turn it over to Dan Donovan, and he can share with the board and to the public the amount of money, but also some recommendations we have connected to the amount of money we're looking to spend.
Okay. Yeah, the first, the first pot of money, so to speak, that I'll discuss is the one-time funds that were given to the district from the state. We received $1 million this past school year. The original amount of this second school year, which we've just started now, fiscal year '21, was $2.9 million. When the budget was finalized by the Board of Alderman, that $2.9 million was reduced to $2.2 million. I know Mrs. Johnson had a question of whether that's legal or not. It is legal. Actually, Manchester took all their one-time funds to pay down their tax rate. So it's something that can be done by the elected officials, the elected officials of the city. As you can see, there's a, there's a list here up on, on the screen now. So originally, as I said, we had the $2.9 million. The amount they took off was $700,000. That was initially going to be used for Chromebooks. So at this point, the amount left is the, is the $2.2 million. So the items on the original list, I'll just run through these quickly, and then I'll give you a little more information on how the process works. The first item is deferred maintenance. There was $460,000 put into deferred maintenance. This is to help with a lot of the issues we have with a lot of our schools. Mr. Smith would be happy to tell you, he would love to have $600,000 to $800,000 a year to try to keep up with deferred maintenance. We've been struggling the last few years with between $100,000 and $200,000 to try to get some deferred maintenance projects completed. So $460,000 is currently in the deferred maintenance column. The second item is the preschool building. Now, we had a discussion on this back a few months ago. We have yet to complete a lease slash purchase with the owners of the building. So potentially, this, this might be moved, or we could simply wait a little longer to spend it. We have all year to spend these funds until June 30th of 2021. So, but that was, that was some cost to improve the preschool potential purchase of the building on Franklin Street. The IT switches for the elementary schools, that's $315,000. That's an E-rate cost. The total cost is higher. We're assuming we'll get approved in February for E-rate on these, which would drop it to the $315 that's listed here. The next item is furniture for the high schools. This number was a lower number on the initial submission I made over to the Alderman, but after some discussions that transpired between the mayor and the Board of Alderman, and I would assume a few school people, they felt that we should increase the number. So it's at this point, $200,000. The down payment for the copiers, that was just approved by Finance Ops and the full Board in the last couple of weeks. So this is the amount coming from the one-time funds to pay for that down payment. The next item is the middle school Amplify Science. That's something that Dr. McKinney has requested. He actually asked me about it today. Those are funds he'd like to make, start to make that purchase any day now. Okay, internet connections at the high schools. This work's being done this summer. An initial conversation I had with IT led me to believe that they had already, they had enough funds to do this. As it turns out, they are going to need probably most of that $160,000 to get the work done. So even though I, on this sheet, it says that we'd have a potential to use it for other things, most of this is in fact going to be needed to work at the connections at the high schools. The next two items, ELL teachers, three ELL teachers, that's the salary, three at $50,000, that's an average, and then the benefits associated with that. Now, this is not a one-time fund. This is not a one-time use of funds, excuse me. I typically would not put it on this list. I personally did not put it on this list, but it was put on by the mayor. The mayor feels that we need to add more ELL teachers, and he thought this would be a good way to do it. Now, the reality is, we can use the funds for this, but it's not necessarily a one-time use, because if we're going to hire the teachers, we're probably not going to let them go at the end of the year. We're going to continue to use them. So that $150,000 slash $200,000 will be required to be taken out of the following year's budget. So that'll reduce options for other increases in the fiscal year '22 budget. And then the last two items, the QuickBooks software and Scan the Documents, that was, those are the documents that we need to keep, all the board documents we need to keep for forever, I guess. We were able to use some of the excess funds we had in the fiscal year '20 budget. So those funds are now available out of this pool of this $2.2 million to be used on something else. So basically, there are, the, the way the Alderman decided to deal with this was they took the $2.9, they reduced it by 700 and approved $2.2. They put it in a contingency. So at this point, what we need to do is decide on these items that we want. We need to vote on it. Then I will send a memo to the Board of Alderman Budget Committee, of which Alderman Dowd is the head of that committee, and basically request that they send those funds to us. Now, I did have a discussion with him last week, and said, I hope I don't have to do this every single time, every time we want to get these funds. So he said, well, that's how it's set up, but there is a meeting with the CFO at the city tomorrow, and myself and Alderman Dowd, so we'll see if we can sort of simplify the process. But I think at the very least, assuming this committee approves it, we would like to approve certain items, because we'd like to start spending, spending this money right away. Those items are the furniture for the high school, the down payment for the copiers, the middle school Amplify Science, the internet connections, and probably the ELL teachers, assuming you want to do that. I did check with Mr. Chopra. He has not hired any of these teachers yet. So I said to him, well, if I gave you funds to hire three more ELL teachers, could you do that? And he said, sure. He thinks he still would be able to do it and hire the teachers for this coming school year. He doesn't have lots of time, but he had made some hires during the year for teachers that had left, and he had hired one new teacher that was in the regular operating budget. So that's the, that's sort of the detail on the one-time funds. Are there any questions or concerns, or?
I have a question. It's Heather.
Okay.
I'm just gonna go ahead, then. I was waiting for Ray to say, okay.
Yeah, I saw Ms. Johnson and Ms. Raymond. Go ahead, Ms. Raymond, and then Mrs. Johnson.
Okay, sorry, I wasn't sure if you could see what to do.
Yeah, I can only see so many people at a time, but I switched over. I did see Ms. Johnson. So Ms. Raymond, and then Ms. Johnson.
Okay. So we already approved the $250,000 for the down payment for the copiers. So do we need a motion for that tonight, or is that done? Because we approved it on the 15th.
Well, you've approved it at the Board of Ed level, but we need to just sort of approve it to request those funds from the city. So that would be the, the request would be, we would like this amount of money for these items. So that's what, that's what the motion should read.
Okay, so you need, and you would need a motion for each line item that you want?
Yeah, you could do it in one motion. If we were to add up the amounts, and you could say, we request the total of, like, whatever that total is, to be used for the following purposes, and then just say furniture for high school, down payment for copiers, et cetera. That's assuming you want to request all those tonight.
Okay.
I also want to mention, for the record, that Ms. Timmons joined us, and also Ms. Bishop joined us just before 5, around 5:40 PM. So I think Ms. Johnson, Mrs. Johnson is next.
Thank you. Okay, maybe I'm shooting from the hip here, and maybe it's a dumb question, I don't know. But if we're talking about either hybrid learning or remote learning, and we don't have really kids in the classroom, I mean, this to me is almost like a moot point until we know what's going on, if these kids are going back to school or not. Because if kids aren't going back to school, we don't need furniture for the high school. We don't need, you know, we don't need the copier. We don't need internet connections at the high school, or switches for the elementary school, deferred maintenance, because we're not going to be using the buildings. So, I mean, I'm kind of like, kind of, and if I'm questioning this, one can only imagine what the parents are doing. So I think before we do any of this, what it has to be, or the language should be, the motion should read contingent upon opening up the schools. Because if these kids aren't going back to school, we don't need any of this. A matter of fact, we're going to have empty buildings. And if there's any ghosts, the ghosts can hit you out of the buildings now. But other than that, to me, this is all a moot point until we find out what's going on with school. Thank you.
Ms. Raymond?
I just wanted to speak to Ms. Johnson's concerns, and I'm not an IT person, but I recall when we were presenting this budget to the Alderman, IT people speaking on it. And I understand that we need these internet connections and the switches in order for, like, the phone system and the internets to work at those schools. So if we don't do it, and something happens, then the principals and anyone using that internet connection would not be able to do it. Same thing with the phone. So there's an issue there. And I would just advocate for deferred maintenance, one way or the other, because if there are no students in the schools, which I don't think has been decided yet, but potentially if there weren't, that gives Mr. Smith an opportunity to really work on some projects.
May I respond to that, please?
Go ahead.
I understand that, but if our schools are shut down, and nobody's there, we're spending money, and we don't know how long it's going to be before the round of school, you know, this to me, I mean, desks, copiers, switches, so if we're saying principals, so are we saying anybody's in the schools, or the principal's in the schools? Who's in the schools? I mean, so unless we find out exactly what's going on with the hybrid, the, the remote, I mean, I guess kids going back to school is out of the picture. We've been told that, the survey that was sent out, that was put on the website, that wasn't even an option for parents, and they're not happy about that. But, I mean, I can't see all this happening unless we have a definitive answer. What are we doing with the kids come the school year? I mean, yeah, there's a lot of things that have to be done in the school, but, you know, you don't know how long it's going to be till we open it up. Thank you.
Mr. Donovan, I have a question. Your list was furniture for the high school at $200,000, copiers at $250,000, Amplify Science $175,000, IT Connections $160,000, and the ELL teachers, which was a total of $200,000. And if my math is correctly, correct, it's $985,000 total? That's what you're, you're looking for?
Yes.
Okay.
That would be correct. And, and in a little bit of a response to Mrs. Johnson's questions, I mean, one of the options is a hybrid model. So one of the options, I know the decision has yet to be made, but, I mean, we've already approved the copiers. The copiers are going to be using over the next six, six and a half years. We've agreed to a contract, so we can't just say, well, we're not going to pay until the kids go back to school. And you also want to get the new copiers in before the kids get in. It's a lot easier to, to change things out that way, when there's a lot less traffic. Same with, you know, some of these items are going to take some time to, A, order them, and B, get them in. The Amplify Science, for example, they'd like to have those materials ready for when the kids do come back, whether that be September 1st, October 1st, January 1st, whatever it is. But I think, you know, we, we have to spend this money in the next 12 months, and I think what we have to do is assume that we'll either be back in a hybrid model, or we'll certainly be back to school full-time at some point. It may not be in the next couple of months. That's a decision for other people to make, but we certainly will be back in school at some point.
Thank you, Mr. Donovan. I saw Ms. Timmons, and then Ms. Brown. You're still on mute, Ms. Timmons?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Donovan. You kind of took the words out of my mouth, by the way. I believe you should be proactive and not worry about what could or should have, might happen. I think I'd rather have this stuff done and ready and prepared to go back into the school in case we do need them immediately. We don't know. I don't think we should take the chance to say, well, they may go back and they may not go back. We have the money, we should spend it, and we should count that we will go back sooner or later. That's all I have to say.
I'm going to make a motion to approve the $985,000.
Say something.
Yep. But furniture for the high school, copiers, Amplify Science, IT Connections, and the ELL teachers. And I'm going to go to Ms. Brown, and then Ms. Gilio. Unless I get a, can I get a second?
Second.
Go ahead, Ms. Brown.
So I also am agreement. I think the deferred maintenance makes sense to be doing any work we can while the kids are not in the buildings. And if it's already been deferred, it means it's not been done recently. I think I would agree to all these things, except I'm really concerned about what Mr. Donovan said about the ELL teachers and being trapped into having that in a future budget that we might not be, we might not have the funds for. And I think even the description of how, of the qualifications those teachers are going to change depending on whether they need to be an in-person teacher or a remote teacher, they might need a different set of qualifications if they're capable of teaching remotely. So I would prefer to do the other line items on there that are, that are available while the students are not in the building, but to wait on the teacher salaries, just because I don't want to be trapped, locked into something that we can't afford in the future. Thank you.
Ms. Gilio was next, I believe?
I have a question. I'm not sure if anyone at this meeting can answer it, but the, the internet connections at the high schools, are those also necessary for even if we're doing remote learning or hybrid learning? I mean, is that something that really needs to be done either way? I'm just not sure. If so, we should definitely do that.
Yes, that, that will certainly help with whether we're remote or whether we're in, in the school.
Thank you, Mr. Donovan.
I mean, what happens if we have some teachers that, I mean, it's, it's a possibility that some teachers might be going remote from their classroom. And if we put off maintenance in our schools on, on these switches, it's going, it's going to put a, it's going to be hard for them to do that. I'm, I'm not exactly sure about, I have a question about the ELL teachers. I'm not, so, so we have a shortage of ELL teachers, and we were going to put more teachers on. So how does this impact our plan for ELL teachers that we already had? Is this, is this like continuing that increase in ELL teachers? So I'm not sure why we would not want to have ELL teachers. Even if we do remote learning or hybrid, we're still going to have the demand there for it. So I'm not sure why we want to put it off. Maybe, maybe Mr. Donovan? I didn't quite understand what Ms. Brown was talking about.
I would just, if I could just interject real quick, we just have to be sensitive to the request for ELL. And we have to understand that there is a civil, we have a civil rights case, like, I'm not using the right terminology, something from the Department of Justice around ELL. There's been an unfortunate history around in this district around support for ELL students. And so part of what we are being charged with is really building supports, specifically hiring ELL teachers for our students. And so this is about two years ago, we had the report for the Department of Justice, and they were pretty committed that they want to see the district making significant investment in ELL. So this board's credited in the previous board. We've hired at least two to three ELL teachers per year, which is in good faith. So just to put that in the backdrop of as we start to talk about ELL.
Thank you, Dr. Mosley. Go ahead, Ms. Brown.
Thank you.
Mr. Norris?
Thank you, Mr. Raymond. I'm sorry. I'm thinking.
Norris is next, I think. He had his hand up.
Thank you. I'm not, I think hiring a VLL teachers is, I think, in line with our strategic plan, is a fantastic idea. I just don't know if it's a great idea to do it with these funds at this time. That was just in reference to what Mr. Donovan said at the beginning, that once we start paying from them from this one-time funds, that we are going to have to put it in future budgets for 2022. I just don't know if we should pay for, I don't know if we should pay for the teachers out of this fund.
Okay. I thought I saw Mr. Norris, and then Ms. Zim. No, okay, go ahead, Ms. Zim.
I just wanted to say, I also, in hearing what Mr. Donovan said, that what Manchester did, Manchester took all of those funds and paid it towards paying down the taxes so that Manchester schools didn't get any of that money. Our Alderman and our mayor could have done that as well. So in good faith, they're asking for a concession, and it, and I understand it's an ongoing expense, but it's one we need anyway. It's one that the courts are dictating. And I, I think to, I think to not do it, I don't think it's in, in the interest of teamwork. I think inevitably, we have to work with the mayor and the Alderman. And I just think to offend them over, over this, when they gave us, I mean, when I look at what Manchester did and what they did, I think they're wonderful. I have to say, I'm very impressed that they cared enough. They realize our need enough, and that's what I've always loved about the mayor. He does understand that our schools, that our resources are never sufficient for the, for the concerns we have, for the needs we have. So I would hate to see us offend the leadership of the city that way. Thank you.
Hey. Is there anybody else that wants to speak on this motion? Ms. Raymond?
I typed it in the chat. I'm confused. We've talked so much now that I don't know which items are actually in the list anymore for the motion. Is deferred maintenance in the list?
Um, I don't think it is.
Okay. So it, can you just re, tell me what you put into the motion?
It's furniture for the high school at $200,000, copiers for $250,000, Amplify Science for $175,000, IT Connections for $160,000, and the ELL total $200,000, and the total was $985,000. This, this is what Mr. Donovan had asked for. I don't know why the other, we can wait on the others, maybe? I'm not sure. Maybe Mr. Donovan can explain.
Yeah, as I, as I mentioned earlier, having a meeting with Alderman and the accounting folks over at City Hall, hoping to put a process in place so that we can get the rest of these funds, maybe in a simpler format. But I think if at least we vote on this tonight, request those funds, that'll open, that we'll be able to spend those relatively soon. And then if the process takes, you know, four to six weeks to figure out, then we can, we can do that.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Donovan. We haven't heard from Ms. Odin. I don't know if you want to weigh in on anything, Ms. Odin?
Yes, I did a chat. Maybe you didn't.
Oh, I didn't see the chat, I'm sorry.
Maybe I didn't get it.
That's okay.
I just want to support the three ELL teachers. We have an office of civil rights investigation on us. They told us we needed more teachers. And I think after all the presentations, over the years, we've heard from the ELL head, Mr. Chopra, and several of his teachers, that is a very strong need in this district. So it will be in the budget next year, hopefully. Maybe we have to cut back somewhere else, but I see those as critical pieces of making sure all of our kids are educated. So I'm going to support that 100%. Thank you.
You're welcome. So does anyone else want to weigh in? Are we ready to vote on this motion? Ms. Gilio? You're still on, you're still on mute? That's okay.
Sorry. I wonder if we could include some of the money for deferred maintenance, or do we, if the amount that you're proposing in this motion, does that eat up everything that we have?
No, it doesn't. And you can amend the motion if you want to put in the $400,000 for maintenance.
But would that exceed how much we have? I have not been doing the math. No. So we couldn't, I could amend the mo, has the motion been seconded?
Yes, Ms. Timmons seconded the motion.
Could I amend the motion?
Yes. Say, just say, I move to amend the motion to add the $400,000 for deferred maintenance.
I amend the motion to add the deferred maintenance as listed.
I second.
Okay. All right. Is there any, anyone who wants to weigh in on the amendment?
Mr. Guarino?
I'm sorry. Go ahead, Ms. Raymond.
That's okay. Can someone do the math?
That would be $1,445,000 if you included the deferred maintenance.
Thank you. I just want to make sure that I'm correct.
No problem.
Are you?
Yes. Yes, I am. All of my practice at doing third grade math over the spring really helped me out.
Okay. So we have an amendment that was seconded by- Okay, um, so we have an amendment, uh, that was seconded by Ms. Zim to add the $400,000 in maintenance, deferred maintenance, okay? For approval. All right, there there any more, uh, comments to be made about the amendment? Okay, okay, so I'm going to take a vote on the amendment to add the $400,000. Um, Mr. Guarino votes yes. Mrs. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Zim?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Giulio?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Oden?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons? Ms. Timmons, I think you're still on, uh, oh, yeah, okay, I'm sorry. Um, so the motion carries nine to zero, so we're going to add the $400,000. I'm going to take a, uh, a vote on the main motion to approve, uh, the items to, the total now is $1,445,000. That right, Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Okay.
Mi- Mr. Guarino, you keep saying $400,000, but I believe the figure is $460,000, just for, just to clarify that.
Mr. Donovan, what is, what is the figure?
That's, that's correct. The, 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 on the sheet, it's $460,000, but I included that in the $1,445,000, the $460s.
Oh, I I said $400,000. I apologize for the, for the, uh, deferred maintenance, $460,000. Thank you, Ms. Oden. I apologize.
No problem.
But I thought it was even. I looked at it real quick. Okay. All right, so, uh, go ahead, Ms. Raymond.
Can you read the motion again? Because the motion is to request the funds, correct?
Right. The, well, the motion is to approve, uh, the, that, to approve that Mr. Donovan requests the funds from the, uh, um, the alderman. Is that correct? Is that, that's how it works? Or are the, are the budget, budget committee?
I thought that, because I wrote it down, and I thought the original motion was to request the funds from the city in the amount of now $1,445,000 to be used for the following, and then we listed them.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, so.
I don't like it when my notes don't match.
That's all right. Um, on the motion, uh, Mr. Guarino votes yes. Mrs. Johnson?
No.
Ms. Zim?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Giulio?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Oden?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons? Ms. Timmons, this, yes, okay. So we have, uh, eight yeses, one no. The motion carries eight to one. Okay, so we have, uh, go ahead, Ms. Raymond.
I'm sorry, I have a lot of questions tonight. Uh, what are we doing about the Chromebook money? Because originally we had $700,000 set aside for Chromebooks. I understand that they're on back order, so we're kind of stuck on that, but what are we doing? Are we still trying to purchase Chromebooks with other funds?
Um, if I can speak to that question, the second part of that spreadsheet is the CARES Act or the the ESER. I wrote cars, but it's actually CARES Act. And if you want me, I can give you a little history on that. Okay, um, as part of the, the CARES Act was the federal government, um, putting, putting funds into the hands of the state. Basically, what they decided to do, they sent to New Hampshire $30.75 billion. Um, well, no, that's the total amount, sorry, and they, amount of, certain amount of that came to the state of New Hampshire. What they decided to do as far as allocating those funds was to allocate them, um, using the Title I allocations. So each year we get Title I grants. The Title I's are for five of our elementary schools. So using that allocation, they spread it, they spread the funds around the state, and we ended up with a total allocation of $3,274,000. So that was a total amount passed on to us, but keep in mind, it's passed on as a grant. So it's not like the one-time funds. It's a grant, just like Title I or IDEA or any of the other ones. So it's, we have to follow the process. We have to fill out applications. We have to do what we do for all the other grants. So they recently, about four, three, four weeks ago, made a decision that the funds would be allocated within each city based upon the Title II allocation. The Title II allocation gives some of those funds to non-public schools. And the way they do that is they take a look at how many non-public schools you have in the city, how many children attend those schools. They do a head count, come up with a price per student, and basically, certain amount of the funds go to the non-public schools. So using that formula, which is the typical Title II formula, 332,000 of the 3.274 will go to the non-public schools. Now, they don't necessarily have to accept those funds, but we have to allocate it to them at least to start. And then we will have to work with them as time goes on. Um, just to give you a little heads up on the, we're talking about Nashville Catholic Junior High. We're talking about the Children's Home. We're talking about Clearway, St. Christopher's, Bishop Gerton. So, um, we're talking about all those, all those schools. Um, so we will then be left with $2,859,000 um, that we can spend, but we still have to, um, we have to put in, we have to treat it like a grant, so we have to request the funds. So we basically have to budget these funds. We have to say, okay, if I want to spend, let's say, $700,000 on Chromebooks, you then would fill in, uh, a request that would be sent to the state. The state would review it and then respond back whether you can make the purchase or not. Um, it's not typically, typically a difficult process, but it does take time. Um, I would suggest that once you sort of make a request, it probably takes a week or so before you hear back from the state that you can use the funds for that purpose, assuming that they approve it the first time. Sometimes they have questions and it kicks back and forth. So as with any other grant, there's a process that we have to do. We have to fill out a lot of information. We've done most of that already, though there are four questions that need to, um, need to be answered. So I need to reach out to someone that is probably more educationally minded than myself. Um, there's questions such as describe the LEA's proposed timeline for providing services and assistance to all students and staff in both public and non-public schools. And there's, there's three or four other questions that are like that. So we need to get someone and and answer those questions, put them in on the grant. I believe once that is done, um, actually, there's one other thing. There's a, a, a statement called a GEPA statement, which, uh, is something that we, we do each year. It's sort of like those assurances that the board signs. Though it's a one-page statement, we need to prepare one of those for remote learning. So my guess is, with little help from Dr. McKinney or someone of that ilk, we can probably put the answers to these questions and get them done in the next couple of days. Once that's done, the funds will be placed into the grant, and then we can start making requests. We can use these funds for many different things. We can use them for remote learning. We can use them to purchase laptops. We can use them for PPE. We can use them to keep our buildings safe. Um, the reality is, I spent some time this afternoon simply looking at Sean Smith's Plan Operations requests and Greg Rodriguez's IT requests. And those two, if they would get everything they put on their go-back-to-school list, would be more than this total amount of money. So I think the important thing is, we've got to figure out what we're going to actually spend this on. Um, we need to, we need to budget that in a way, um, that that makes sense. And maybe, maybe we need to wait until, um, we decide on how we're going back to school, because that may, that may change, um, how we spend this money. We may, if we're going to be remote, my guess is we'd spend less money on cleaning the building, so why use the funds for that? Um, if we're going to do a mixture of two, we've, we've got to make decisions on what the most important things are. But that is, uh, sort of a long-winded quest, answer to the question of where the Chromebooks would come from. They would probably come from, from these funds.
I I guess my reaction, just, uh, so we're having a discussion now, would that also include PPE material as well, Dan?
Yes, PPE would be paid for through here also, yes.
And just to, just to bring people up to speed, we also lost about a third of our, like, we, about 500 Chromebooks did not, were damaged in some way or another, um, which is about 33%. So we are going to be looking to replace at least a minimum of, you know, I think, I think it was 500. I'd say we'd start about maybe 700, if not more, start to replace those, those Chromebooks that were damaged. But also because of the environment, we would start to place a, um, in order close to around, I I don't want to give a number, but, uh, close to, I would say, first replacing the 33%, but also being prepared um, in the event that we continue in a remote or even a hybrid model. Um, so those discussions have already, uh, taken place.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Dr. Mosley. Okay, I think I saw Ms. Zim's hand up.
Well, I would have, I would question if we go back to this other 2.2 mil. We have $755,000 left over. Is there, is it the thinking of this, of this group that that we shouldn't just put the $700,000 for the Chromebooks there? Is, is that a, is that a, is there anything wrong with that question?
So there's nothing wrong with the question. Um, the thing is, we still, you know, the IT switches for the elementary schools, we really need those. We just don't need the money now because we're not going to do the work until the spring. Um, possibly, depending on what happens with the screen preschool building, those funds could be, could become available for other uses. Um, but I think we need to probably wait another, another few weeks till we have an answer to that question.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, I see Ms. Johnson's hands up.
Thank you. I just want to, yes, thank you. I just want to ask Mr. Donovan a question. I know that Ms. Dr. Mosley just talked about our Chromebooks that were damaged. I know we talked about that at the last meeting. Um, so I guess the question is, ones that are damaged that we can't use, how are we going to, who's paying for that? Our insurance shouldn't be paying for it, and, um, I'd like to see a blank copy of the contract that Karen signed. If I might get one, a copy of it, please. I'm just kind of curious, because we can't keep having, uh, Chromebooks destroyed, uh, damaged, and then we have to keep replacing them because we don't have the money for the first round to keep doing it for second and third round. So, um, I'd like to see a blank copy of that contract to see how the responsibility is laid out. Thank you.
All right, I can get your copy of that.
Thank you.
Okay, um, so we have, um, another item on our agenda. Um, I'd like to move this, um, meeting along. It's about a donation, um, to the school district. And it has to do with 9,000 KN95 masks for the upcoming school year. Um, Dr. Mosley or Mr. Donovan, would you like to speak to it?
Oh, I, maybe, uh, Ms. Brown should speak to it since it came through her, but it was a very generous donation. If she'd like to say a few words.
Um, I'd love to. I, uh, had a parent, parents from the district stepped up. They had, um, access to some PPE and, um, brand-new KN95 masks, 9,000 of them. And, um, they generously donated them to the Nashville School District to help us reopen the schools, keep everybody safe. So I really appreciate it. Um, Mr. and Mrs. Scott and Sarah Wessel, um, really generous donation, and I would really love to have the committee approve the, to accept the contribution.
Would you like to make a motion?
Um, how do I say that? Uh, I move that we accept the contribution of 9,000 masks from the, uh, Scott and Sarah Wessel.
Okay, uh, I'll, I'll second. Um, I thought I saw Ms. Zim and then Ms. Ms. Raymond.
Heartwarming when families, parents, uh, community members, uh, come and meet needs of the district. And so I would like to thank, I think you said, Mr. and Mrs. Wesson. I would like to thank them wholeheartedly for their generous, um, I wish we had 100 of you out there, but, but we're happy for you as more than I can say. Thank you so much.
Okay, Ms. Raymond, did you want to say something?
I just wanted to echo the thing. Um, this is, this donation, it is, it makes me very emotional, um, because I think, um, the pandemic can be very scary for, um, parents and for teachers and for, um, families who are a high risk. And I, I, I just think it's an amazing number of, uh, KN95 masks. Um, and I, I feel like this is going to make a huge difference in, um, how people feel about coming into the schools, um, knowing that we have the proper, um, safety equipment, like the most safe safety equipment. So I just, I, I feel very strongly about it. So thank you so much. I really appreciate this generosity. Um, and then the other question I had was, um, do we need to make this motion twice? Like, can we accept it in budget committee, and then do we need to go to the, have like a brief full board meeting right afterwards to accept it? Or is this sufficient?
I would think you could approve it at the committee level since it's a full, full committee.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Committee of the whole.
Good.
Okay, um, so.
Mr. Guarino, could I just say thank you to these, this, uh, couple, Mr. and Mrs. Wessel? To think we didn't even ask for this, that they, they called Ms. Brown and donated them, uh, is just, uh, and the, the quality of them and the amount of them is just phenomenal. So I'd like to thank them, uh, immensely for what they've donated for our, for our district, our students and our staff. So thank you.
I'd like to echo those words, too. Thank you so much. Really generous. Thank you.
Okay, um, if no one else has anything else to say, I'm going to, um, take the roll call. Uh, Mr. Guarino votes yes. Mrs. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Zim? Yes. Ms. Zim says yes. Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Um, Ms. Giulio?
Yes.
Um, Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Um, Ms. Oden?
Yes.
Um, Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Motion carries nine to zero. Okay, that leaves us to the bottom of the agenda. Um, I want to thank Mr. Donovan and Dr. Mosley for, uh, for their presentations tonight. Uh, does anyone else, do we have any other business? I don't think we have any other business before this board, so, um, if anyone else, if anyone has a motion to adjourn, Ms. Raymond? Move to adjourn? Okay, and seconded by Ms. Zim? Okay, on the motion to adjourn, Mr. Guarino votes yes. Mrs. Johnson?
Yes.
Uh, Ms. Zim? Yes, she says yes. Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Um, Ms. Giulio?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond? Yes. Okay, Ms. Oden?
Yes.
Yes, Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Motion carries nine to zero. Um, I'll thank everybody and have a good night. We are adjourned at 6:21 PM.
Good night, everyone.
Good night, everybody.